To order. Thank you, Mike. We will call to order the August 12th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Town of Ashford at 7:01. We'll go through the seating of alternates. Welcome all for joining us. Uh, seating of alternates. Uh, the only alternate I see on, if I'm not missing anything, is Steve. And Steve, I'm going to sit you for Jerry at this point. Okay. And I think that's it. That's, uh, we have, we usually, we have a quorum there with six, I believe. Okay. Very good. Um. Approval of the minutes from our July 8th, 2024 meeting. Um. Is there a motion to approve?
It's Janet. I'll, um, move.
Motion to approve. Okay. Is there a second?
All second.
Thank you.
Yep.
And any discussion on those?
There's, um, there's one typo. Um, Mike's name is misspelled. On, um,
I saw that same one. Yes.
Okay. Page two.
No. Yep. And that was under.
It's, uh, Mr. Yakaloff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the, uh, second sentence there, we should keep them with Miles update.
Right.
Should be Mike. That would be the only, though. That's the only change that I saw. Any other changes? Updates or edits? With that change being noted in these minutes, uh, do I have, I have the motions to approve, um, all those in favor of approving the, uh, minutes from July 8th meeting with the changes identified, to signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those, all those opposed? Abstentions? Still moved. Thank you. We will open up the meeting to public comment at this time. Um. And we've got a couple here. I will start with Christina Sebo. Go ahead, Christine. You're on mute.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Chairman Silversmith, Christina Sebo, 91 Perry Hill Road. I was not able to listen in on the July 8th PZC meeting, but I watched the recording and read the minutes. I'd like to comment on what I heard. I must say, I was disheartened by the discussion about revising the regulations for the IID zone. Sounded to me like the citizens of Ashford are being forgotten and ignored. They made their concerns and desires for what should or should not be built on the IID zone remarkably clear, both in the public hearings last year and in the PZC's survey in December. From last month's discussion, however, it sounded to me like the PZC may be merrily rolling along with the goal of developing the zone to the max with huge buildings still to be desired and permitted to make the zone more marketable. The bulk of the discussion was about the concept of a floating zone or special development zone and how that would be implemented after a developer's draft proposal came in. That sounds like a way to put potential developers in charge of the process, even though it would allow the town to negotiate with them. Even if this is the way the PZC goes, I can't imagine why we would not have clear benchmarks for what we want and would accept, particularly with regard to the amount of destruction we would allow to the pristine wetlands and headwaters for the water supply of Ashford and surrounding towns. The ECCD Development Review Checklist was mentioned by Commissioner Bellamy and is indeed included in the folder for tonight's meeting. At the last meeting, however, Mr. Demato kind of dismissed this as necessary for the regulations. Rather, he said low-impact development issues would be addressed when a proposed site plan comes in. Why do we want to put potential developers in a primary role in this process? Why can't we use available tools and town experts to develop baseline specifications for allowable development based on scientific data about the characteristics of the land and its environs? As in other towns, qualified professionals can be employed to determine the requirements for building in the headwaters of a public water supply, building above pyrotite bedrock, and building on heavily sloped land. Why don't we want to be in charge of the process of developing this important piece of land? Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much, Christine. Uh, next up, Charles Vidic.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Uh, I, like Christine, did look at the minutes in the uh, previous Zoom meeting. Uh, I thought there was some good progress made in some respects. I will say it's important, um, that the commission become more familiar with the options that are available from a planning, uh, tools point of view. Um, there are various tools. Plan, uh, plan development is one. Floating zones is another. Uh, those two concepts are similar, but not the same. Floating zones is a two-step process. Plan developments is a one-step process, but whatever process is done, um, it requires, uh, the first and fundamental step of land management being planning. Um, I've seen this same problem emerging in Mansfield, uh, where there are no specifications, uh, as to what should happen and planning begins with a concept plan, um, that at least in a developer can work with. Uh, that means having some goal, and I believe that was brought up at the last meeting. So I think that's good. I thought some of the, um, concepts that Mike has put forward are also very good, believe it or not. Uh, I think he's got, uh, some very specific, uh, uh, improvements to some of the setbacks that were, like, arguably arbitrary. But I think it's more important to understand that we don't need a building size, neither building large or building small, maximum or minimum. Those things are really driven by, uh, site design principles that are established. Um, and, uh, really fundamental, one of the major changes that's happened in the last uh, 20 years is the Stormwater Quality Manual of 2024. Chapter five in particular, I highly recommend everybody on the commission to review because now the first and fundamental step of any development, uh, following the, uh, Stormwater 2024 quality guidelines are, uh, low-impact development. That's the first step in any development plan now. Uh, that was not the state of the case in 2004. This is a radical change that's happened in Connecticut. Uh, now, of course, it is a guideline. However, the principles behind it are supported by an enormous amount of scientific evidence that shows the water quality impacts. And I would close with the, uh, the fact that I'm sure you're all aware. Um, Ashford has more G double A classified land than any municipality in Connecticut. And I repeat that. Ashford has more G double A classified land than any municipality in Connecticut. G double A land is land which is water supply watershed land for drinking water purposes. That does create a challenge for this, uh, for the town of Ashford and for all towns that have the, uh, G double A. They happen to be the senior project manager for Western Connecticut Council of Governments, and I'm not speaking in that capacity. But we're issuing a report, um, in the next couple of weeks, which talks about saving the, uh, public water supply watersheds of Connecticut. And the challenge is not only here, but in the Saugatuck, um, um, reservoir, um, in, uh, Western Connecticut and one other as well. And the Aspetuck is the third. Those three, uh, regional basins have the greatest responsibility and also the greatest challenge. And that's why low-impact development is really got to be looked at. And I encourage you to look at chapter five of the Stormwater Quality Manual. Don't read the whole thing. It's 535 pages. Read that chapter and at least you'll get the essence of what's, uh, transformed, uh, the DEPs and deep, as they call it now, uh, perspective on these issues. So I, I encourage you to do that. I think the conversations that you've had so far are excellent. Uh, but I would make sure that that is, uh, uh, those issues I've just brought forward are being considered. And I encourage you to do that. And I think what you're doing so far is great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vidic. Thank you for your words. Uh, next up, Mark. Oh, and also, uh, Dick, I don't know if your hand is to talk, but, um, I can see your hand is up, please. Uh, Valerie, if you didn't see, uh, Dick Williams has, uh, joined.
Uh, yes, Jeff, I have joined, uh, had a bit of a problem getting upstairs. Uh, I have good news and bad news. I've got a lovely little kitten. And the bad news is the lovely little kitten caused me to fall and fracture my vertebra. So I'm, I'm definitely a challenge with getting up and downstairs, getting to where my computer is.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for joining us. Appreciate it. Um. Uh, okay. Uh, thank you for that. Okay. Moving on, uh, Margie Roy, you're up next.
Good evening. I'm Margie Roy, 221 Old Town Road, Ashford. Um, it is Grammy camp here this week, so my house has my grandchildren here today. I will not be staying for the whole meeting, obviously, but I did sign on because I have a few things that I do want to share with you. I listened with interest to your last meeting during which there was a lot of discussion about cha- about changing the regulations regarding the IID zone. I have a couple of questions and concerns. I have previously submitted comments before about uh, concerns from several land use attorneys on both sides of the development issue about the special permit regulations in the Ashford zoning regs. They found them especially lacking and that relying on these with the IID development is worrisome. At the last time I mentioned this, it was suggested that a possible review of those regs might be a good idea. I saw Mike's ra- Mike's review of the IID regs, but nothing about the special permit guidelines. Are they sufficient? Should they also be reviewed? I also found the discussion of the Special Development District interesting. I can see how it helps solve the challenge of defining acceptable uses during a time where things change so rapidly. I would like to hear some more discussion about whether or not this direction offers the town of Ashford better controls over the development direction or not. I also found it concerning that public notice doesn't happen in this process until much money has been spent on a final master plan. That seems too late for me. I also noticed that you're still not addressing the understanding of what this piece of land can support. It is a challenging piece of land and there should be some clear understanding upfront as to its limitations due to it being a public watershed and having challenging slopes. I hope further discussion might clarify some of these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margie. We appreciate your comments. Uh, next up, Joe Hendrick. There you go.
Good evening. Um, I too have recently had the opportunity to review the, oh, yes, 39 Barlow Mill Road in Ashford. Um, I, to review, uh, 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 the minutes from the July 8th meeting and look at the recording. Um, and, uh, I would like to comment on the discussion of, uh, the options, uh, regarding the IID zone, particularly the Special Development District zoning as an option. Um, and then again, and then later I'd like to address the, uh, discussion of the POCD. Three things struck me from the July 8th, uh, discussion of the Special Development District. One, the commission seemed excited and interested in the possibility of this mechanism affording flexibility and control for the town over, uh, future development. And I can understand that. Two, uh, it was stated quite clearly that the success of this approach depends on a clear vision on the part of the commission for what development is desired. And that vision would necessarily, or I think should flow from the plan of conservation and development. Um, and the third point is the examples given for towns using this mechanism to, uh, guide their development uh, included quite a number of large towns with extensive development and possibly more planning resources than, than Ashford has. So I just mentioned that, that, that is a cause for concern and I would, I'm looking forward to the discussion tonight. Um, I'm sure the commissioners have recognized this and, and possibly have their own ideas. It is to all our benefit, therefore, that the plan of, the 2025 Plan of Conservation and Development provide a strong foundation for future development in Ashford that can be endorsed by as much of our admittedly diverse community as possible. For that reason, I applaud two suggestions made last month by Chairman Silversmith. One, public input into the POCD, um, possibly, uh, involving hearings prior to submission of the plan to the state. I think that's important. And I believe that annual reviews to keep the plan current and reflecting the changing markets and uh, knowledge and desires of the town. Uh, annual review to align the POCD with goals and objectives of the committees and commissions that are creating it. Um, I think that's essential. I urge the PZC to commit to both of these actions. Thank you for your attention and I look forward to more discussion on these issues at, uh, which is on the agenda for this meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Joe. Okay. Um, any other public comment out there? Seeing no hands, seeing no one waving at me who don't want to use electronic hands. Thank you very much. Again, um, we, we're here to represent the public, all the public, and we appreciate your input. Uh, your input gives us, uh, cause to take pause. Uh, think about what's right for the town itself and, uh, what's right for the future of the town, especially when it comes to the POCD and such, its vision of the town. So again, thank you for your input. We really do appreciate it. Uh, moving on to bills, um. Uh, I know Mark is not here. I don't think he had anything submitted. Uh, Mike, did you have anything? I didn't see anything on the agenda that you put in.
No, we, we didn't have a, a hearing last month that, so we didn't have any noticing bills.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Um. To save time and effort, moving on to correspondence, we did receive a, uh, uh, the planning and zoning, uh, letters from, uh, CROG, uh, for adjacent, uh, excuse me, adjacent towns to Ashford and the requirement to provide that information. Simply put, the overview Windsor P and Z, uh, their map amendments, uh, regarding the POCD as they're updating theirs. Ashford had its own letter, uh, reserved regarding this hearing that we have tonight regarding a zoning amendment for, uh, uh, accessory dwelling in a live and work, uh, general commercial area. Um, East Windsor, uh, theirs had to do with, uh, writing is terrible here. Um. For the planned commercial, uh, area. Uh, Mansfield Planning and Zoning was amendment of the, uh, development of temporary and limitation moratorium on high-density housing development. And South Windsor was a text amendment on senior development regs. Uh, I'm sorry, one more. Wellington text amendment regarding home occupation regulations. Um, all of those are available on our website for meeting with girls for tonight. Mike had posted those. So again, it's just a formality. Uh, as you saw, our letter, uh, was sent out also, uh, regarding our hearing for this evening. Leading into that, uh, the public hearing. I would like to, at this time, open the public hearing for PZ 24 dash two, the text amendment application for sections 300 dash 18 and 300 dash 21 regarding live-work units in the general commercial zone. Um, as normal, our procedure for our hearings are, we will hear from the applicant or the applicant's representative. Uh, we will offer, uh, the public to, uh, offer comment. And again, uh, comments from the public. We ask that those be limited to two minutes or less and that all comments be directed toward the chair. Okay? Uh, following that, we'll have questions and input from the commission members of the applicant, uh, including, uh, any staff, the zoning enforcement officer, if we have questions regarding, uh, the application. Uh, we'll ask for a final statement from the applicant at that point. And then we will, uh, seek a motion to close the hearing. With that being said, um, the quick overview again is, uh, located. Excuse me a second here while I play with my computer. Pick up something. Here's the application. Again, the application, uh, was coming from, uh, Raymond Standing of, uh, 85 Desert Brook Road. I didn't look up the zip. I see there's no town in there, but we can obviously find the town through the zip code. Um, regarding the company name, Ray Standing Wood Creations at 97 Not Highway. Those of you who don't know, Not Highway, 97 Not Highway is the building across from, uh, Central Auto and Central Auto Service and Towing, uh, what it, what used to be, I don't know how you'd phrase this, the old new Rogers and Masonary or the new old Rogers and Masonary. And just going down to the application, uh, purpose and brief description. Uh, they'd like to, uh, use the current commercial property updated, uh, to include a live-work zone, allowing the owner, Ray Standing and his wife Sheila, to reside at the property that currently includes woodworking equipment used for making wood crafts. There'll be no additional building. The current building has room to contain both the residence and the workshop, uh, which have separate entrances. Um, that's the kind of overview. I will open it up now to the applicant as they've come up here, uh, Mr., and this is Standing. Uh, would you like to tell us, uh, a little bit about your application and, uh, your plan and what you're doing?
Uh, thank you for your time. Uh, yeah, we're, um, currently living in Rentham, Mass. Um, and it's a bit of a commute to go to work at the shop at 97 Not Highway. So we are looking at, um, we would like to, um, make that our residence as well as working there. Um. We're both retired and that's with our shop there and equipment that we would like to just be able to work and live there.
Anything else you'd like to put out there or you're good?
I
think we're good. Good. If you have any questions.
Yeah, we will. Yeah, we'll come up. The commission will come up. I'm just going to open it up to, uh, it might come around quickly. I'm going to open it up to the, uh, public right now, uh, to, uh, address the commission, the commissioner with any, uh, questions, concerns, or, uh, questions of the applicant that they'd like to have answered. And 11, 12, 13. Usually it's 13 seconds. Um, okay. Very good. No input there from the public. Um, so this is moving along quickly. Now I open it up to the commissioners for any questions either of on the applicant, the applicants, the, uh, standings here or of Mike as our CEO. And if Mike, if you had any comments or anything on this, I'd be open to that also. I have, uh, Dick Williams with a question. Go ahead, Dick.
Yeah, uh, I saw this and it occurred to me that this was, uh, a, a new occupancy that presently exists within the town many times over. We have a lot of, uh, home-based businesses, uh, some are, are in residential agricultural areas and some, I, I believe are in, in, in commercial areas. So, uh, I would ask Mike, uh, why did we need to create a, uh, new, uh, classification for this? Why wouldn't it be covered with the existing, uh, uses that we have?
So we you're, you're correct in that we have a lot of these around town, but we don't have anything in the regs that allows for the sort of live-work to happen in the same building in the commercial zone. So if you are in the residential zone, you can have a rural business um, and essentially have the same thing. But if you're in the commercial zone, it doesn't, we just didn't have a, uh, a path. Um, so this creates essentially the inverse of the accessory dwelling units, but on the commercial side and is not far off from the rural business designation or the home occupation business designation that we have. But those apply in the RA zone only.
Yep. I, I haven't looked at every business. Uh, last time I looked at the, the list of, uh, home businesses in town, it numbered up in the 200, 300 range. Be surprised if some of those weren't, uh, in a commercial area, but, uh, you know, that's neither here nor there. If, if, it's, if you feel that it needs to be designated specifically, specifically where it's going to be built in the commercial zone, uh, you know, I've got no problem with that. It's just, it seemed kind of, uh, strange that it would be called out.
The other thing that I just want to point out, because there's a four criteria that is being proposed. Um, and part of the, the rationale for this is when you're dealing with a home-based business, the requirements are that that business function as incidental and accessory to the, the residential dwelling. Um, because we want that to be sort of the second use, the primary use being the dwelling. So we're setting it up in the same way with the approach here, except again, we're flipping it. And we're saying that this dwelling is essentially accessory and subordinate to the commercial space. So in both cases, the secondary use, which is either the business, if you're in a residential zone or the dwelling unit, if in the commercial zone, is, is, is secondary to the, the primary function. And that's, otherwise, you know, we wouldn't have, there wouldn't be any consistency. So, um, live-work units aren't that, aren't, aren't a new concept, but we wouldn't want someone to take a commercial building like, uh, the midway and put five or six apartment units in it and just leave the bar open, for example, right? I know that's a dramatic example, but but the way we've structured it. We're keeping this accessory and subordinate to the primary use, which will maintain the overall function of the zone it's in, which is a commercial zone. So that people can live in the areas where they're working. But the business and the parcel and the zone overall continue to function as commercial.
Thank you for that distinction, Mike. I appreciate it. I'm sure we all do. So you've kind of asked the standings to kind of ask, answer, answer to probably my question. So you folks are retired. This will be your primary residence. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And Mike with the as you just explained, being in the general commercial zone, a home occupation permit would not be required in this situation. Is that correct?
So this is proposing the a text amendment. So this is this is proposing to change the regs to allow if they meet the criteria. So they would then, they would come in and get a permit from staff, so we would review to make sure that their floor plan met all the criteria. They wouldn't get a separate permit. However, if I can't think of an example off the top of my head, but if this were new. This were a new building, let's say, or new use altogether, if the commercial use was a special permit use, then at that point, they would get a special permit from the commission. But they wouldn't get a separate commission permit just for the conversion of this space.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Nord.
I have a question for Mike. Will will these people have to get a C O?
Yeah, they'll have to go through all the, all of the traditional permitting requirements for health, building, et cetera.
Okay, so the question, what what is currently, how is this building currently being used?
So I think the applicant can tell you that, but I just would keep in mind that this is a text amendment for the regs across the board, so it's applying unilaterally to the G C zone, but I I think the applicant can give you an example of how their building is set up.
Right now, it's a three-car garage with an office attached to it. I don't know if you've seen the the building. It's all attached one building. Part of it, the three-car garage area is where the shop is and the office space has a kitchen and a bathroom with a shower and everything. So that's the area we'd probably, we would, we're planning on or hoping to live in. This was
Go ahead.
This was before we bought it and I guess before Mr. Rogerson, when he bought it, it was a residential. And he changed it over to commercial. So I think what that's what we're looking for is to change it back.
Just to have it work in.
Work, yeah. What Mike said, the residential live workspace.
Anything else from commissioners at this point? No, hey, not to put you on the spot, standings, any any further comments or anything you'd like to say, final comments?
It it no, yeah, we really, really liked Ashford. We actually have a daughter that lives in Stafford. With a grandchild and we like the era retired, the commute has been kind of a lot and we're just looking forward to doing woodworking and and enjoying our retirement.
To your grandchild, a daughter.
Yeah.
Excellent, excellent, okay. Thank you. Thank you for that at this point.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Jeff, just quickly, I'm just gonna read the four bullet points into the record so that they're here.
Thank you.
So we're we're again adding it as a permitted accessory use, so there's no zone change that occurs. There's no, there's no permanent primary change to any parcel that that would come for this. We're requiring that one of the occupants of the unit be the business operator who shall also be the owner of record. So what this means is they don't come before you and say, I want to have this live work unit and then essentially turn it into an apartment that they're gonna rent, for example. It would be occupied by the operator of the business and the property owner. We're requiring that they they, this area includes all the required necessities for a dwelling unit, so it's going to have to have a bedroom, it's going to have to have a kitchen with a food prep area, living area, a bathroom, toilet, sink, shower. Again, it's gonna have to have all the things that a dwelling unit would have, so that we're not cramming these things in in some random far-off corner of a commercial building. It shall be contained within the principal building. So again, different from accessory dwelling units because you're not building something detached somewhere else on the property. So contained within the principal building and it shall not exceed twelve hundred square feet or forty-five percent of the gross floor area. So again, not allowing these things to function to be substantially larger than the business itself. We're requiring that it have a separate outside entrance and that's for emergency services purposes predominantly, but also wanting to keep those two things separate. And we're not allowing them to be served by a separate curb cut. So we sort of want them to exist silently, but have all the things that a traditional living space would have. So I just wanted to make sure those got out there before you close the hearing.
Thank you. And the twelve thousand square feet, twelve hundred, excuse me, twelve hundred square feet at forty-five percent, that's so that's basing it on approximately twenty-five hundred square foot. Primary dwelling. Primary building, I should say, approximately.
Yeah, so it'll be the great, the greater of the two, so that, because I I think that a twelve hundred square feet is kind of in alignment with what we had in our regs for the minimum dwelling size. So we're we're capping it at twelve hundred. Or the or the forty-five percent. And again, if you're at fifty percent or greater of the building size. It's hard to say that it's accessory, so we want to make sure that it doesn't exceed that fifty percent building size.
Do you also want to read into the record if I if I you did and I missed it, I'm sorry, the three hundred twenty-one general provision also under D? One C?
Sure, I can. So under under D for administrative action, which is the section of the regulations that is where basically my authority is drawn from. So we're adding to that section a reference to live work or accessory dwelling units. We already have language in the regs. We've talked about that before. So live work and accessory dwelling units in accordance with the specific standards gets added to that section.
Thank you for that. Since Mike kept me from closing prematurely, I appreciated. Anyone have anything else to ask of, share? Again, there will be discussion on this at the meeting currently now. We have the applicant here. If there's any question on your mind of them, I ask that you reach out now. Okay, very good. At this point, I would ask for a motion to close the hearing for P Z two four dash two text amendment application for sections three hundred dash eighteen, three hundred dash twenty-one.
So moved.
Dick Williams moving, is there a second?
Janet, a second.
Janet seconds. All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Standings, thank you very much for your time. We'll have that coming up on our meeting for discussion if you're looking to hang around. Things won't be asked of you at this point. We'll go with the information that we have. Also at this time, I
Jeff, I'd like to make a make a motion on behalf of the standings, since they're waiting here and instead of putting them on the hook to listen to all of the unfinished business. If we could move item eight forward of item seven, so we could discuss and move on their request.
Okay, so there's a motion to change the agenda to move up the discussion on the application for the text amendment. Is there a second on that motion?
Janet, a second. Good idea.
Janet seconds. All those in favor, please say signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are you opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Okay, so we will open it up to discussion regarding the application for the text amendment. It's up to you, commissioners, what's, what are your thoughts? What is your input?
It seems, this is Dick Williams, it seems like a very reasonable request. And a simple extension in the commercial zone for what we have quite a few of of small businesses that exist within the residential agricultural, so this sounds like something that shouldn't be of any burden on the town. And in 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 sense, it is a positive thing for the town.
Thank you, Dick. Anyone else?
This is Janet. I think it's a reasonable addition to our regulations, so I'll I'll make a motion that we approve the text amendment.
I'll second that.
I'd like to have a little bit more discussion before we move on to that. So I'm not asking for a vote at this point, which is common practice. Thank you for that. So I guess the other thing that came up for me and I think Mike has addressed it very well is you know, we're talking about the the small mom and pop situations of a residence becoming a business and a business become a residence, but I think Mike gave an excellent example of Midway deciding that they didn't want to serve meals anymore and just be a bar and use that space for other reasons. That that was my only concern before I really got into this and looked at the changes that Mike had done to limit where, not so much where this can take place, but how this can take place, you know, having one of our larger commercial enterprises in town. You know, I'm trying to think of that not main heat, but over up, over by the I I D zone. Any of the large buildings that we have in town this way, so I think that has been addressed effectively. That was that was my only hesitation on this, so I'm glad to see that that was dealt with. Any further discussion from anyone? Hearing none, we have a motion, we have a second to accept the application for the text amendment change regarding live work in the commercial zone area. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Unanimous, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And we'll talk to you soon, Michael, for any detailed follow-up you need.
Yeah, just as an aside, you you say you do woodworking. What types of things do you make?
We're doing, it's a my cousin makes baskets, we use baskets and we're making handles and bases for the the wicker baskets.
And some craft stuff. You know, we're, we're, we're just figuring it out.
I would encourage you to reach out to the Arts Council. They've put on a lot of shows and it might be a venue that you could display at.
Yeah, it's that type of thing also. Yeah, we, yeah, signs and and crafts and
Yep, and what was that again? I'm sorry.
The Ashford Arts Council he's speaking of. If you were to pick up a copy of the Ashford Citizen, which is available in the post office or the town hall. In there, they have a section on a regular basis every month. They have their section in there with information, upcoming shows, joining, all of that.
Oh, that's great.
Great, great, yeah, yeah, we're trying to get our feet under us. Thank you so much.
Okay, um, at this time, I'd also like to, and it probably works out for the best considering he came in during the middle of the hearing, I would like to see Doug for Luther at this point, Doug Jenny for Luther. Welcome, Doug.
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, I apologize. I dialed in at like seven thirty-two. Thought it was a seven thirty meeting instead of seven this month.
How late do you want to stay up at night? Come on. Okay, so having moved that, we will move back to our regular agenda. In excuse me a second. Okay, so we're dealing with unfinished business, number seven item here. First one is discussion. Continued discussion on the I I D zone, the special development districts and low-impact design. I'm hoping the members took their homework seriously and looked at some of the suggested special design, floating zone, all kinds of different names in different towns. And I did take to heart what Mr. Hendricks said also in that Wellington and Burlington, to me, seem the closest most detailed and closest to what we're looking at and looking to do. I think it was a little buried in Mansfield and in Swinser and Windsor, either that or I'm just naive and dumb. In finding out what they were talking about, but I'd like to hear from the commissioners, those have been able to review some of this. And what your thoughts are. I did see some of the guidelines in here where some did have guidelines, some didn't have guidelines. Such as height. I think I saw one at like forty-five feet. Three followers, forty-five feet. I also saw in one that whereas their normal height limitation was thirty-five feet. In this zone, you could make a special, the commissioners could make a special exemption. If raising the height was appropriate for the business and application that was being presented to them, that it wasn't overly aggressive, it wasn't something like, it actually could go up to like sixty-five feet. I believe something like four stories and sixty-five feet was the allowable limit for the commission to go up with. So there was some flexibility, again, in that depending on what was being proposed, where it was being proposed. No, I thought that was interesting. I'll be quiet now. Any input from any of the commissioners? Yes, Janet. You're on mute.
Okay, I did email you and Mike. I I did look through the towns and I got, I got confused. Now, I did have COVID, so maybe my brain was fried, but I got confused. Now, I did have COVID, so maybe my brain was fried, but um. I would, I, I don't understand how it really works in the regulations and I, I wanted. Uh, if you could show us. One, an example, because I just didn't see how it looked all that different, but maybe I missed it.
I come up with and then share my screen. Uh, we'll take a look at Wellington. Bear with me. And zoning. Bricks. Okay, zoning rigs. Yeah, this is funny. This doesn't look like the same. Mike, do you know where the uh, regs for Wellington show? That?
On, where, where are you looking?
I'm in the table of contents right now for uh, Wellington planning and zoning.
Um, I can probably pull up a graphic that we did as part of the regs. Um, give me a second.
Go back here. Sure advised. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong ones. Nope. Why? Strategic development zones, right?
Mm-hmm.
I've got a copy here, hang on. Go up one more. Well, it's too big. Yeah, that's a little too big. We'll go down one. And we'll go to the meeting. And we will share screen. Whoops. Okay. So this is Wellington strategic development, uh. Zone regs. Um, and it has obviously its purpose. Um. You see a lot of it about viability, flexibility, diversity, uh. More flexible manner, uh, that otherwise would be allowed by underlying zoning district. Ultimate facilitate, ultimately facilitate more suitable development than the underlying zoning may otherwise produce. Uh. Okay. Uh. It ha- it does mention the low impact uh, development, the LID that's been mentioned a number of times this evening. Uh, it also, in this case, identifies mixed use developments, multifamily housing and commercial uses are encouraged. Um, green building technologies. Uh, again, kind of. Mike, would you consider these guidelines for developer?
Um, the vision statement is just, yes, sort of, to use that, the term that's there, it's the framework, it's the. Sort of setting the table for what's going to be required further down in the document.
Right. That's all I see. Is there other information that you can access or share?
So. Basically, um. But when the, we, we wrote this, I can't remember when it was the i- i- initial adoption date. And then obviously Wellington had the large warehouse proposal. Following that, um. There was an application from a private resident to, to make amendments to the regulation. The commission adopted or considered a moratorium. And ultimately, um, the town through the Economic Development Commission sought funds through ARPA to do. Um, an economic development strategic plan, which they're in the process of doing now, which is a little bit different than the P O C D. So what happened was the commission, we basically dismantled the S D Z to. To confirm to, to the people that were involved at the time, that basically the, the zone wouldn't be operable. While the strategic plan was developed, so what is left was. The main purpose and vision statement, just to keep the structure of how the zone was developed and its intent. And the plan is to basically redraft this. Um. Once the strategic plan is, is finished.
Um, okay, all right. Okay, I'm sorry.
So that's why, I mean, I can show you the, what was originally adopted. It had sections on low impact development and height. And, and area and, you know, yard bulk standards, et cetera. Um, and we can talk about the process. It's, it's largely the same no matter what, and, and. One of the reasons why some of the towns that we talked about or that I probably mentioned at the last meeting is, we're not. These, these issues of, of, for example, low impact development. Um, or, or mixed uses, or, you know, the approach that we're taking isn't. It, it's not town specific, so we're not, we're not coming up with this special development district idea. For Ashford. The challenge is Wellington and Ashford are unique in the sense that they both have. Very large parcels that are commercially zoned on a highway interchange. So. Most of the communities that you might consider Asher to be similar to, don't. Mansfield doesn't. You know, Talend really doesn't. Um, Eastford and Union, none of these places have large development, so we need to look to. Places that have. Sort of considered what. Large development looks like, because they have larger parcels or larger projects, which are contained within several parcels. Which is why some of the towns don't seem like Ashford. It's because. We're trying to come up with an approach to how the parcel might be developed. Or not, but, but the idea is that towns like Union or, or Hampton. Aren't looking at this. They don't have this question that they're trying to answer.
Right, and I know I'm looking at like Windsor. I mean Windsor specifically talks about their corridors along the highways that they have. Uh, both, you know, like to the airport and then ninety-one specifically. Um, and we've got eighty-four in ours, however, we don't have the width and the breadth of a Windsor. So to speak, you know, but we do have, you know, these, this area, this single area, it's, it's really not going to apply to many other areas in Ashford. It's not a multi-area, like when you look at Mansfield and it identifies like five, six or seven specific zones that this could be applied to. Um, we really don't have that in the long run. Uh, we're just looking to try and deal with this one area right now.
Yeah, this would be tied to the bounds of the IID, and so. It would, wouldn't be applied to. Some other large parcel or, or combination of parcels in the, in the RA zone or in the G C zone or any other place. It would be. It would be eligible only to a parcel within the IID. Um. I think that whether it be, everything is allowed by site plan, no public hearing, whether it be that everything is a special permit, whether it be. Special exceptions to the Z B A, special development district, whatever the, the approach is. Either way, you're going to have to have some, some vision. You're going to have to have some purpose, some understanding of what the expectation is. And the framework, the reason why I brought this up is that. You know, a lot of times, traditional, what they call Euclidean zoning, which is where we tell you, you draw a box in the middle of a. Parcel and we have setbacks which have to be thirty-five feet or twenty-five feet. They are defined across an entire zone or town. And they take absolutely no. Uh, there's no consideration given to the parcel itself. So.
Right.
We, we, we don't look at the environmental factors, the topography, adjacency to s- town roads, state road. Highway interchange, traffic capacity of, of these, the road that it's on, visibility, nothing. And so. We, that broad brush approach creates consistency when we're talking about two or three thousand parcels in the RA zone. But when you're talking about parcels, a total parcel count that you can, you know, deal with on one hand, like we're talking about with the IID. It, it really is a, you know, not necessarily in my mind, the way to get. The best development of the parcel. Telling someone that because their zoning regs say you have to meet a thirty-five foot front yard setback. And they're telling you, yeah, but, but I could make better use of the space and I could give you an additional hundred foot buffer to. An adjacent parcel or to a nearby stream, if you let me go fifteen feet. That conversation doesn't happen if we go with the traditional approach.
Right, um, right.
The, the commission still has to sort of understand and draw that box around what is they're open to and what they aren't open to. They have to still decide. You know, at that high level, what they, what the vision is for the zone. Um, because we have to draw the box and put up those bumpers for the lane that we're going to try to put this IID into. Um. So it doesn't matter what the approach is, the commission still has to have that fundamental discussion about. Do we add to the uses? Do we subtract to the uses? Do we increase the height? Do we reduce the building size? I mean, those things are still going to have to be established in some way. Um. Otherwise, every time something comes in with the IID, if we go with a special development district, you're going to have conflict. Between what the regs say, what the commission feels is appropriate, what the public feels is appropriate, what the applicant feels is appropriate. Because we haven't properly defined it. Um. I don't know if that says anything, but.
So are you, are you saying, again, I, I apologize for my naiv- my naivete, but when it comes to what we just saw with Wellington and their vision. Um, though it lacked specifics in that, and as you said, it was tabled basically until they got done with it. There were other requirements besides their vision on this too, besides the I L I D and green uh, technologies and things like that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll show you really, really quick. And the, and the S D Z, without getting too far into the weeds. Was a little bit of a hybrid, because we, we wrote it to have two pathways, but I will show you. Just take you through it quickly.
So you can see. Calling that up, while you're calling that up, uh, Dick, you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah. I kind of want to go back to where we started with this whole thing, I don't know, years and years and years ago. Uh. We were concerned that this large parcel that had a lot of potential. At, in, in and around exit seventy-two, uh, had basically had a lot of proposals, but nothing. Ever came to be. And what we wanted to do is find out what we needed to do. To make something viable that could be developed there. We were also concerned that uh, something would be proposed that we might not really want to be there. And specifically, the potential for a trash-to-energy facility was one of the items that came up. And that's what led to put in force the requirement that there be a, money put. Down as earnest money that the town could spend to do, do, due diligence on anything that would be proposed. And that was fifteen thousand dollars or some percentage, so it would give the town a fair amount of uh, money. To hire consultants to represent the interests of the town. So hence, it would give flexibility for what. Could it could not be developed there. But uh, the overall effort that we had from the very beginning. Was to try to uh, seek a good use of the land. That would be compatible with the uh, ecological uh, constraints that are there. And also generate uh, economic benefits for the town. And. That is, I don't think that's really changed. We've had a lot of different discussions. We've had things proposed and not proposed. Uh, but the overall intent, I still think is the same. And I think if what Mike is saying that. Not specify, you know, uh, you know, thirty-five versus thirty-seven feet setbacks and things like that. That we really look at what's required uh, to put a development on these parcels. That would be of benefit to the town and would be compatible with the property is what we seek to do. And I, I think if I heard you correctly, like you were proposing to do something like that. Am I anywhere near correction?
I, yeah, I know what Mike, go ahead, Mike, go ahead. I won't put words in your mouth. Please stop.
I think one, one of the things that, that. We're trying to do is, is. Get to a point where. We can get some of that consensus, but to your point, you know, the, the current regulations. Both generated a proposal that. At least some people feel wasn't an appropriate use of the property. And. It also generated comments from. Applicants for text amendment, because the regulations as written don't actually stack up to facilitate a project that is viable, right? We have, we have issues with heights, it's and, and uses and et cetera. So we have a regulation now that's not serving anybody. Um, and so we're trying to draw the line and get to a point where we have something that is actionable. But not, not develop regulations that require such a level of intensity in the design. That, that it gets to a point where an application comes back before the commission that is so close to being a hundred percent design. That. The, the sort of iterative process that some folks have talked about, or wanting to have. Better controls over certain environmental constraints that may be on a particular property have sort of, have sort of already come and gone.
You know, uh, some of the things, and if I read the many, many, many uh. Feedbacks that we've got from surveys and like, uh, one of the ones that struck me is interesting. Is someone said, well, why can't we put a Whole Foods market at that interchange? That would be nice. I'd love to have a Whole Foods, Whole Foods market there, but the problem is, is there is no. Uh, ma- market for a Whole Foods market to be built there. There's no traffic, there's no volume, there's, there was. Nothing that would be there. So th- there's a case of determining what would make sense. And then how do we take and tailor the requirements for the zoning of that property? That would make sense to a proposal that would be economically viable and at the same time. Be environmentally acceptable, you know, for many reasons for the town. And I, if I heard some of the things you were saying, Mike, y- rather than specifying. Uh, specific setbacks and things like that, that we would. Look at each, at each special proposal and try to determine how we might craft. Regulations that would be amenable for development for that uh, item that was being proposed. Uh, you know, with the overall go- goal being finding a way to develop that site. In a environmentally and economically responsible way that would benefit the town in the long term. I don't, I don't know, Mike, how you write that up. And I, I guess that's what uh, Wellington is, is wrestling with right now.
I, I mean, I think that the. We can, we can make a regulation do. An awful lot and, and. An awful lot. And, and if you guys have a very clear focus on what that intent is, what your, your purpose is, what you feel is appropriate, et cetera. I'm not concerned about my ability or our ability to capture all that into a regulation. The biggest thing that, that I. Where I sort of. Struggle is, I don't know what the consensus is. We've been talking about this for many, many months. And I don't feel like if you tasked me to sit down and write a regulation that's reflective of the comments made by commissioners over the last six months or so. I would have any idea. How to move forward. Because I've heard comments that say, we should, we should, I'm, I'm paraphrasing, summarizing and dramatizing, but. I've heard comments that say, we should be pro, you know, the environmental sensitivities of the site only. And whatever can happen after we focus exclusively on that is, is what we should, we, we should be dealing with. I've heard comments that basically say the complete opposite. And that this, this is our opportunity to develop and to, to grow the grand list in Ashford. And so we should take it. And we could do that in a way that isn't going to destroy, you know, the environmental. Characteristics of property. I've heard people say things that are down the middle and, and others that I, I'm not sure where they fall. So what I'm trying to do, I think, is just throw different oppor- different examples. Example approaches in front of the commission in hopes that one of them generates more traction than some of the other things that we've discussed. But I. I, I, and I'm fairly comfortable with what you're saying, Dick, and I think I could. I could make some amendments and I could do that. What I'm not sure of is where everybody else falls in relation to what you've said. Um, and, and I don't want to go through a process of, of preparing regulations and scheduling hearings. When I don't feel like. The commission has said. We're in lockstep with how we want to do this.
I mean, I'll try to summarize what I said in as few words as possible. We need to have. A regulation that permits something that is economically viable for the location. That is sensitive to the environmental aspects of the location. And is compatible with the long-term vision of what the town would like to see at that location. Coming up with something that would be pie in the sky of what we wish we could have. Isn't going to make any sense and writing down a whole bunch of. Setbacks and building size requirements and all of those things. I, I don't think that gets us closer to having a, a proposal for something that would be. You know, viable to be developed at, at the location.
I think part of what Mike is saying. Is, you know, we talk, and even you used the term, Dick, you know, you said vision. And it goes back to that old quote, I'm not looking to offend anybody, but when Congress was trying to define. Uh pornography, what makes up pornography and the, the statement was. Um, I don't know what it is, I can't define it, but I know it when I see it. You know, it's, it's that type of thing. It's. The vision is different people to, different visions to different people right now. Um, we have groups and as Mike was kind of identifying that in a very statesmanlike way, we have groups that say. Um. Uh, you know, I'm for, you know, I, we want to keep the water quality, we have a, we have a uh responsibility. Um, that the slope of the land and the effects on the environment and everything. But yeah, I'm open to economic development there. Well, I, I'm really being very honest, I'm very hard pressed to believe that when they say one and then throw in the other ideas and afterthought. Um, you know, I think. I. I don't think any of us know what is right to go in there. Um. With the changes that have taken place over the years. And I don't mean changes in the land. I mean, changes in how the land is looked at. Um, again, back in two thousand fifteen, it was looked at as an opportunity. Along the highway to potentially gain business. That is not in the middle of town and not causing traffic issues and things like this for the middle of town. Um. Now things have changed along that. We know trucks go here and there and everywhere across towns. Um, depending where the GPS sends them. So, you know, its effect could potentially be in the town. But. The development of the site itself with the water quality and the requirements and low, low impact design. I mean, that was not a term, I don't, it was not a term I was familiar with ten years ago. Um, and it's something that, you know, has come into the discussion here. I'm not, I'm not coming up with any answers for you. I'm just really identifying that I think we're at a. Uh, loggerhead here where the commission. Uh, based on either what they feel or what they feel they are representing in the town, who they are representing. Uh, needs to come up with a consensus. For us to move forward with this. Um. Is it, is it something we're just going to leave alone and not change? Or is it something that we need to change to meet? All needs, you know, for both environmental impact as well as an opportunity to have. Economic development for very, you know, a trial, a town that basically struggles with its finances each year when it comes to budgets.
Yeah, Jeff, I, I don't think. And this is. Why I uh. Put forth that uh funds to allow the town to study any proposals that would be made. And that's some pretty sizable amount of funds if there was a big development to, to go in there. That would allow us to look at the impact of uh, of, of whatever would be developed on the water quality, on. All of the items that people are concerned with. And uh. We, we're not proposing that you develop something that is going to impact negatively the watershed. But you, you've got to be able to look at what's being proposed and then evaluate. What the impact that that would have on the watershed and how the impact could be. Either modified, changed, or, or what have you. But without having a specific proposal of what would be developed there. Simply specifying. The setbacks, then the building size and all the things like that, the height. Those items by themselves are not going to really lend themselves to a development. And if we say, A, we want to develop that site. Now, if we don't want to develop the site and we want to turn it into a park. Then I think the town should, should, should co- compensate the owners of that. Property and, and, and appropriately and turn it into a park if they want to. I don't think that's the best use of the property, but, but if that's what someone would want to do, then it's up to the town to make the people that own that property whole. But I, I think that it is possible to develop that property and to do it in a responsible way. And especially where there is the funding to fund consultants that could evaluate all these different items. Uh, we would not want to have a development that would go in there that would develop, that would. Uh, put all sorts of traffic into the uh center of town. And, you know, we could do studies of the traffic and it's not just the GPS. I mean, you, you can study where traffic is going to go and where it would make sense for it to go. All of those things could be looked upon when there is an actual proposal for something to be developed. And uh.
Well, I get, I guess the, I guess part of what I'm thinking about has to do with. And I, and I fully understand and I, and I really respect the. Regulations that were put in to try and protect us when a developed. A potential developer was looking to come in with what their proposal was. And allow us the ability to use funds from that developer. Again, it's not town funds, it's funds from the developer. To. Do our own independent studies, studies that aren't biased in any way, that don't come packaged with the developer or anything like that. That we can pay for without, you know, having a huge hit to our finances and such. However. We're kind of the chicken and the egg here. It's like, what developer is going to develop anything? If they don't think it's going to be successful, kind of like Mike was just saying here, why would I put regs together? That I don't think are going to get through a hearing or going to be approved by the different factions. That allow it to go through and move forward. Um. You, you know, it's, uh, i- if we have the developer and they want to do it, then yeah, we get cash to try and take a look at it, but. Before that. You know, there, there aren't funds out there right now for us to do such, you know, maybe with the next budget period. Maybe that's something we should try and put in. And I think this was discussed at the last meeting. I think Luther brought it up. Uh, about the ability to bring in uh, a land developer or some type of uh. Uh, development real estate consultant to look at the property and give a, a bird's eye view. Even the group that um was working on the Cattle Rock. And came in and was doing the um. Uh, the cleanup on that and taking a look at what needed to take place. I know they are meeting. At the end, kind of turned into, what can we do with Cattle Rock? And they actually had input as to what they've seen. Uh, around the country with such a parcel and what it could do. Maybe that's a group we could reach out to from a consulting standpoint. Uh, and get them to take a look at it. But. Yeah, I, I can understand where Mike needs direction on this and where to go. What I do like and what he brought up had to do with. A mast, you know, they come in with a master plan. And that master plan gets looked at by everybody, the town at hearings, by the commission. You know, can, and you know, can you? Well, that's not going to fly because of this, you know, we're telling the developer before they've put in. A lot of time, effort, money into it as to whether we think it's a viable opportunity. And then they come back to us with a full-scale plan that can be controlled and tweaked. And meet the requirements of, but that's where we need to have those requirements available. I think, Mike, right at that point. We need to have those requirements available as to what they need. So we're not just. You know, pulling this out of the sky and free-forming them with what they're asking to do.
Yeah, I mean, it. It's, i- if you went through the special development process, you know, this sort of. The design increases as the process goes. You know. S- step by step, I guess. But. I'm trying to think of the best way to articulate. Sort of. Where. Where I, I think things are and, and. I think one of. You know, I keep coming to Wellington as an example. The Loves Truck Stop is a, is a good example because um it had a lot of extremely environmentally sensitive. Uh, considerations. It was adjacent to. Uh, half a dozen wetlands um and um. Roaring Brook. And a small headwater to Roaring Brook, which is a cold water stream habitat, specific species um. Breed, fish breed in that area. We were in a little bit of a different situation because the, when it came around in eighteen nineteen, it had already been approved. The process to get the septic system approved by the state took so long that they needed to come back and get reapprovals from the town. So the idea that development was going to happen there was sort of. Um, already. Set aside. We weren't having a discussion about whether or not the project. Really should be approved or denied because legally. If you get a project approved, they go to the state to get a septic design. And the project has to come back for reapproval. It's hard to say as a town where we fundamentally changed our minds, even though the only thing that's happened is you've improved stormwater, you've improved septic, et cetera. But there was a lot of concerns raised during the public hearing related to traffic, which is not different than what we're talking about here. Related to, to noise, related to light. And there's a lot of concerns related to. The, the wetlands and the, and, and stormwater, et cetera. So we're over two years, two and a half, I don't, not quite three years post-construction. And um, we get monitoring, quarterly monitoring, we get monthly reports and we've had annual monitoring. And have not. Um. There, there's been no notable changes in any of the, any of the monitoring that's been done. Um, related to stormwater quality, uh, temperature in any of the monitoring wells and any of the streams, et cetera. So I'm, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm going on and on about this because I think. One of the things that needs to be considered is. If a project comes before the commission and it proposes X. And the only. The only public comment that comes. In, in relation to the application is not in support. Is there a project that the commission? Sort of sees as appropriate. I guess in either, in either way, we're not likely to see. That sort of split down the middle. Public testimony in favor and in opposition. Um, I live in a town where there's development that I don't necessarily think is appropriate and it's far. Easier to become galvanized around something that you aren't comfortable with than it is to set time out of your day. When you think it's appropriate. And that's not to say. That. You know, that's not to assume that people are in favor of things because we don't hear from them. But. You got to find this point where you feel comfortable individually based upon how the regulations are written. Of, of how a project will stand on its own. And. Just because people say a project is great and is not going to have impact, doesn't mean it won't. It doesn't, doesn't mean that it will. And just because people say it's going to, going to have environmental impacts also doesn't mean it will. So we've got to come up with regulations that are. Sort of structured independently so that. We can kind of get there. And that's where I'm struggling right now is I feel like if someone walked in tomorrow and said, what do you think the commission would do about this? I'd say, I don't know. I think there's people that'd be yes, there's people that would be no. But it's largely going to come down to the sense of the public. Hearing testimony. And I think at this point it could go either way. And we haven't made progress in that. Sort of realm.
You know. Trying to make another. You know, stab at this. I, I'm going to come down on the side that I think we should develop something at exit seventy two. What the something is, I can't say what, what it is right now. I'm going to come down on the side that says we should do it in a way that is environmentally sensitive. And does not do any irreparable damage to the headwaters of the Fenton River or whatever. Uh, and I'm going to say that we should do it in a way that the town is not on the hook. For a large amount of money to uh fend off a developer because we have in place this provision. That has the developer putting money up that would fund any studies that the town would do. So. So, those three items, uh, you know, basically put some boundaries around things. The only other thing that would be different, if you di- didn't agree with any development whatsoever there, then that's. That's another discussion to have. I have been of the opinion that that is one of the last places that we can develop that doesn't impact. The town properly because it, it is remote, it's on the highway. And I'm, I'm also of the opinion that whatever can be developed there. It can be developed in such a way that it would be environmentally sensitive. Have a lot more environmentally sensitive than as the thing that was being proposed for a, 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 a waste recycling center. Which would definitely be a potentially a lot worse item in, in that sense. And we did not have until we wrote the regulation. The ability to extract monies from a potential developer to do the studies. So, you know, we've got those three uh legs of a stool that we can. Uh, you know, exist on. Now, the question is, Mike, how do you put some of that into a regulation? And I don't think it's specifying building height, building size setbacks and things like that.
Any of the comments ready to, oh, Janet, I'm sorry, your hands up.
Sorry, um. Yeah, I, I feel your pain, Mike, and I agree, you know, I agree, we haven't. Given you a lot of uh direct. Direction that we've all agreed on. Um, and I, I agree with, with Richard, um, that, that. How do, the question is, how do we write our regs that, that come up with something that's economically viable, protects the um. Environment and, you know, it, it meets the town's. Environment and you know, it it meets the town's um vision. Um, but you were going to show us something else from Wellington and I don't know if that would help us at all um.
Yeah, I I um was gonna just. I could bring you, bring you through the the full SDZ. Um. Hopefully you're gonna be seeing this shortly. I'm going to go through quickly because there's a lot of text and and we're not. I don't think we're that far yet. We want to walk before we run. Um so uh Jeff showed you per the purpose statement and the vision. Um. This section here. Is eligibility, so this is where we were saying where it could go. Um because again, this is a floating zone, so we're saying these are the places it can go. Um, I think we've talked about here would be specific to um. The IID. Um, we split the process up into uh basically two options, what we call traditional and proactive. We're not talking about that here, so I'm going to skip that for now just because I think um. Keep it simple, so we. We're basically identify what needs to be included in each section. So the master planning, uh master concept plan includes the overview, a conceptual uh site plan. Uh schematic architectural drawings and the data table kind of showing the nuts and bolts of the development. We have um. Supporting materials, including a traffic impact analysis, um a statement of compliance with the P O C D, a parking analysis. Um and then um. Some other additional information that the commission may require, including reports related to utilities, view shed, which was done for the uh I I D proposal, just giving you an idea of what. The what the development would look like. Uh municipal fiscal impact analysis, basically what's it going to cost the town if this gets built? What would the town get if this gets built from a tax standpoint? Um. If this were, let's say, a hundred single family homes, municipal uh fiscal impact analysis is important because you're going to get. One point six school age children or whatever it is now, um whereas if it's a, you know, commercial building, you may have other types of of pluses and minuses. Um. So I'm going to skip through some of this because we kind of went through it and cut to um. This section, which is where we listed the permitted uses. So again, this was a list developed of of the types of. Uh projects that could come before the commission under this. So this was separate from the permitted uses in the other zones which we, which we drafted. Lot of these come from the regs, but we specifically sort of cherry picked, I will, I guess I'll say, uses that they wanted to encourage. Um. We have a statement on design principles. Um and design considerations. So we're talking again about bulk standards, height, area, yard, maximum height. We have um limitations on building coverage and impervious coverage. We're giving them a a bonus if they have a lead certified um building, which is the U S Green Building Council. Um, start hearing things like non-renew renewable uh resources or buildings that are like net zero. Um for for how they use energy. Um. I'm going to skip through, we had this section here under B for low impact development, so we're saying there shall be no. Um runoff to adjoining properties, no increases in flow, so you're not sending any new water. To your neighbors, um which is the no net volume increase. Um, and um then a reference to ongoing maintenance. So how are these? These systems going to function long term? Um. Language on site lighting and photometrics, which we've talked about dark skies, the International Dark Sky Association, um similar idea. For how we were handling light trespass, parking and loading, landscaping, et cetera. Um. This talks about modifications, so um. I'm going to. Again, this is a an outline of the process. It's a little bit. Different than what we'd be talking about here because we split the process up into two pieces and sort of when. A do a a property owner or developer would look at this as sort of when you take what they would describe as risk. So the traditional process um front loads the design. And requires more of a design upfront. Um and you have all your public hearings, et cetera, upfront. And then you get to the end of the process, which is the red submission of hundred percent site di- site design, and that is a site plan, so there's no public hearing at that point. You have both of your hearings upfront, and so the idea with that is. Um, you know what you're building, you know what you're constructing, you know who your tenant is, you do all of your, your hearings upfront. You get all that taken care of, you get your decision, you go in and do your hundred percent design. And because you're constructing exactly what you've already asked the commission to to do and you you knew that from the very beginning. There's no public hearing at the end. So I want to pause that and I want to sort of. State and restate and triple state, this does not take away a public hearing step. It just changes when you have the public hearing. This is not a reduction in the oversight of the commission and this is not a fundamental change in the oversight that the that the public has. Um. Public hearing process is the same. The proactive process, let's say you have a site, but you don't know what the tenant is going to be. So you're going to come in with a thirty percent design instead of a seventy. You're going to have a public hearing to land the zone. Um. And then when you come, when you get your tenant. You not, so let's say you land the zone, you've got your your conceptual approval, you can say the commission has a has has tacitly endorsed this, we've got a concept plan which shows. A building of approximately this size and approximately this location with approximately the most parking and approximately this use. And that gives you enough to get the tenant on the hook. And then you come back to the commission, once you've got your tenant and you've got your design. And you you go again for um the special permit because now you've done your design. So the proactive approach has two hearings, one at the front, one at the back. But it requires less design upfront, thirty percent. The traditional process has two hearings, but it's front loaded. Because you're doing more design. Um, but the idea is with a more of a standard development district. You come in with a master plan. And a zone change and you land the zone based upon a master plan, which is submitted to the commission. And then after that's been done and taken care of and approved, you come back in with an application. And site development plan, which shows the full design. Later, sort of as a. Second, third, fourth step in the process depending. Um. So, you know, in the Wellington project, just to get to they, they did um the conceptual plan. I mean, with all the the geotechnical design, the drainage design, the traffic design, the fiscal impact analysis, conceptual renderings. Everything they needed to get to that point was still several hundred thousand dollars. From the developer's standpoint, right? So it's not a cheap endeavor. But they were more open to some of the things that the commission asked them during that process because they hadn't already gone through and designed everything a hundred percent. Um. I'm not trying to suggest that this is the magic solution. I'm not trying to suggest that. This is what everybody loves, it works for the developer, it works for the applicant, it work public, it works for the commission. But what this does allow is in a situation where you perhaps don't have across the board. Consensus, which feels like where we are now. It allows for a bit more of an iterative process to take place. So you can sort of sharpen that pencil at different stages rather than them showing up with a fully baked application. And having the commission feel like, oh my gosh, why, why would they think we would approve this and have the? The public feel like, why would they think this is appropriate in our town, right? They're having to make a lot of assumptions. Um, and so what I'm trying to do is reduce the the number of assumptions they make early on. Um. I could certainly try to pull something together or put something together that. If you thought it would be helpful, if you think there's something I can prepare or, you know, you tell me what you think. You could use and I'll do my best to. Pull it together.
Yeah, Mike, I appreciate all the detail that you showed. And uh. That detail would have to be done before any final uh approval of any item. But the thing that is. Missing from what you've put forth is uh. The market uh. Specifying a plan of what we want is is fine. But if the market doesn't support doing it, uh it's all for naught. And that really has been the catch twenty-two that has gone on for decades at exit seventy-two. There's been nothing really proposed that has stuck. And and it goes. I I won't list every one, but I can think of at least six or eight different things that have been proposed. For that exit at different times uh and for one reason or the other, uh they've all fall fallen through. Um. What we need to do is put a a a welcoming match that says if. This is an area that we would like to see developed. And put some constraints around it, fine. Um, and. When someone were to actually propose the final thing that would be developed, most everything that you laid out in those. Eight to ten pages uh would have to be part of the final uh items that would be done. But I think first you need to figure out what is it and it, does it make economic sense to be developed at that site? Uh and does it also? Meet the environmental requirements, the traffic requirements, at least in a a fifty thousand foot level viewpoint. Doesn't have to be down to the nitty gritty. And I, you know, if we can encourage people to come in and propose some things with some. Some level of detail, but not the everything fully fleshed out, I think we can maybe get from. A lot of talking and no action to at least something happening at that that exit.
But I I don't, it it's not zoning and uh planning and zoning isn't, you know. May- maybe you think it's everyone's job, but it's not our job to market what's there. I mean, I know we've talked about trying to make it more marketable. Janet, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to hop in, I'll I'll call on you in just a second. Um, if I don't talk now, I'll lose my entire idea behind it. Um. And I think what Mike showed. If a developer wants to go in there, if they come through and they think that's the site they're going to go to, they're going to see. With some of those requirements that were in there for. Um, you know, what we, what needs to be done from a green standpoint, from an L I D standpoint, things like this. Um, and they want to move forward, however, they're not going to, they're not going to throw in five hundred thousand dollars, you know, they want to put in whatever, I mean, I'm I'm just picking numbers, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. For a, basically, what do you think of this? When they put it out there so that they're not in for five hundred thousand, a million dollars of developing uh everything. And then coming to us to say, you know, whether it's with the public hearing and the public doesn't want it, you know, just like what we went through before. Um. It it it, the market itself is the market itself. If we can be um. Encouraging to the market, if we can make it more marketable, that is great, but what we can't do is just. You know. Identify specific businesses and things like this that we think should go in there. We need to have it open enough that if they want to make a try for it because they like what they see. Then. You know, more power to them. Mike, I just wanted to be clear that they're actually in the proactive process due to the special permit requirements for. Whatever that might be required for a special permit, then there would need to be two hearings appropriately. Right? The beginning one with the master plan and then the ones involving the special permits.
Right, so one would be pertaining to whether or not it was appropriate to land the S D Z on the proposed parcel. And then the second would be whether or not the the actual development of the parcel as depicted. Is is appropriate. Um. So there would be, yeah, the two hearings and they could run concurrently. Um. But.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, Janet, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. I'm trying not to be confused. Um, on your flow chart, you show that on both, on both sides, it says that um. There's a hearing for a zoning change. Um, I don't, I don't understand why. What?
So the difference between a regular development, the dev- regular development process and the. The special development district that we're talking about here with a floating zone. Is that we're drafting the floating zone, but we're not actually landing it on a property. So we're creating the zone in the regs. And we're saying it's eligible to be landed in these locations. So in this conversation, we would say, we have this new zone. And it's eligible to be landed on a parcel located within the I I D. So they would have to have a hearing to land that special, that special more conceptual level uh flexible zone. To put it on the, on a property in the I I D. Um. So that would be where that first one. Sort of the the first hearing comes into play.
And Mike, do your first hearing, let's, I'm not saying that we want to put a ten story hotel up there. But uh. On the conceptual side, if you were to think about a ten story hotel, that would uh. Open up a certain number of things that would have to be addressed in terms of the regulations, you know, height, uh parking, uh. Traffic, and there'd be a whole number of things that you could conceptually look at. Uh on the front end, it wouldn't be the final design, but it could be the conceptualization. And and that would be your your first phase. Uh, am I, am I getting that cor- correct with what you're saying?
I I think so, yeah, I mean, it would. We would. Determine the specific requirements based upon the parcel, the development, the intensity, et cetera.
Yeah, and if that looked to be. Past the first hurdle. That to be somewhat feasible, then you would go down to all the detail on the second step.
Right, so if they gave you a concept plan. That felt appropriate, it had a building size that was appropriate. It had parking that was appropriate, it had a use that was appropriate, it showed open space or whatever that you all felt was comfortable, you were comfortable with. You would approve that and then they would go on to a sort of another step in the process. If you didn't, then it would stop there.
Yeah, and I I think that approach. Wi- without using the term marketing, Jeff, but that would lend itself towards an economic assessment by a developer to see whether. Do what the developer would be proposing is going to make any sense on the site to the town, to the environment. Without going all the way through to the end.
Right, right, exactly. It's it's almost a preliminary approval. Uh, based on what they're talking about, you know, you, just from the get go. Um, you know, will they, you know, will this, will this fly with the proper tweaking? And you can say, yeah, it's a great idea, great concept, go forward with it. And then they become more detailed and we can get into the things like, you know, everything from height and width and breadth and all of that.
And the second phase that would involve that would trigger the uh. Uh, you know, the consultant fees that we would levy against the developer if we get past the first one.
Sure, sure, when they have a serious application, when they have a serious site application, then yeah, we can hire and, you know. And if they're telling the truth, then likely they're not going to worry about the monies because they're going to get back whatever monies in escrow and everything. Janet, that hand is still up, go ahead.
I I do have a second question, um. Would uh all these applications automatically go to special permit?
So the way that it, it it depends on how we would take the process, but. The way that it's typically done is that there, it it's unavoidable to public hearings. Um, you could. You could have it be whate- whatever, I mean, there are, the way that more. Uh, I guess if you were to review this in a community that was closer to Hartford. Typically, what happens is you have a hearing for the master plan and then there's no hearing at the end. Because the idea is the only thing they can construct is in compliance with the master plan. So having a a hearing at the very end, once the site is fully designed. When your regulations say the only thing you can do is what we've already approved, typically. It it doesn't make much sense. Um, however. If you're breaking up the the design and and sort of trying to do this as a little bit of a step by step. The either way that it was envisioned in the traditional process, the proactive process or or as um Mr. Um, Mr. Vidic mentioned with Mansfield, I'm working on those for them at this point and others. Um, it's, it still requires those hearings.
Yeah, Mike, I, I would suggest that you make a cut at a, a draft regulation. That uses this two-step approach that we just discussed. Uh, I don't think doing the master plan like you talked about, you know, you know. In, in and around Hartford would make sense for Ashford. Cause we really need to, to get the interest on the, the front end. And get a developer that says, well, this is what I think we can do, do enough to information so we can have that. You know, phase one, a hearing, uh, and then if it looks positive, then go on to the phase two. So that's, seems to be something in my opinion that would work for Ashford and work for this area.
Mike, is it possible for you to share with the commission, um, that? Work in progress, that draft of the Wellington information that you had there when it came after, everything basically after vision. Cause we can see that, um, and allow the commissioners to go through it. And, you know, kind of be a working group so we can take out what we don't like or add to what we do like to help give you some. Uh, some structure. Would that be helpful?
And Mike, Mike, I would add that you, you do it and uh, you, you were showing two different approaches. That were kind of melded together. I would, I would stick to the approach that's the, the two-step approach, not, not the master plan approach.
Yeah, the proactive, yeah.
I think the one thing that if I had to sort of say the commission should start to ruminate on is. You know, this idea that. That there, there will be. No matter whether we develop the zone and we consider all the parcels to be just one, one contiguous piece for the purposes of discussion. That when, when the previous text amendment was, was before the commission, people came into the town hall to drop off their letter, ask questions, get an agenda, whatever it is. And there were people that, that just, you know, I'd be talking to and they'd say, we don't care what's, we don't care what is proposed in the IID. Are, we think it should be nothing, right? It should just be open space, the town should acquire it, it should be part of the state forest. And so that, and there's other people that think if it adds to the grand list, I, I don't care, I, I don't care about. Um, tadpoles, I'm not worried about the dark sky, we're in Ashford, right? That's not relevant here. And so we're, we're going to have both of those perspectives and the question is, is there a development that could come before the commission? That when both of those perspectives show up. Will, will be independent, sort of independently appropriate. Because we can say shall not cause irreparable harm to the headwaters of X, Y, and Z. And we could say that's a requirement and the applicant is going to show up and say, there isn't going to be. And members of the public are going to go, show up and say, well, there, there is going to be. And the same thing will be for the grand list and for jobs. And so what we need to do is, is create a regulation that is strong enough. That it, it will sort of chart that path and be neutral from both of those perspectives so that. It's, there's that clarity so that we're not falling on, well, this person said there is going to be an issue, but the applicant's engineer said there won't be. And.
But as Richard said, we, we would have money in escrow and I think we could ask experts to. Give us their opinion on that rather than taking.
That, that's if we, that's if we have a developer with a, with a, you know, kind of all in.
But I think.
Follow through.
I, I think, and I'm, I'm sorry if I feel, you feel like I'm pushing back at you guys, I'm not trying to, but I guess from my perspective. Developers and. The, the site, the project that came before you conceptually, right, as part of the text amendment was, wha- whatever was envisioned, I, I. I think that if we're going to hire somebody and I've been involved in third party, I've both been a third party reviewer and I've been involved in projects that were third party reviewers. And I've hired them for other towns. Their perspective is generally to say, you need more stormwater mitigation in this area. We need to, we need to expand the width of this buffer from 50 feet to 75. I think it's in, I think we should shift the way we're dealing with, with stormwater over here and maybe we should, we should. Go from this type of a basin to something that's in the parking lot. They're going to give you. Feedback on tangible improvements that can be made to the project. To, to make it better. They're going to give you design and technical feedback. They're not going to tell you. This is a million square feet. If it were 750, we wouldn't have this problem. This, this, this thing here, you know, if, if we had shifted from manufacturing to research and development, we wouldn't have these traffic concerns. Um, they're not going to give you those really fundamental. Feedbacks or statements about the, the use or the size of the building, et cetera, that are. Some of the main drivers of the conversation we're having now, right, will not have irreparable harm. Nobody is going to tell you whether it's going to have irreparable harm. If, ain't, none matter how much you pay them, they won't make that kind of a statement. So having been involved in the process before, I don't want you to rest too heavily on what that third party review is going to be. Because it's, it's going to be more technical in nature. It's going to be based upon an assumption that the commission is already comfortable. That a 500,000 square foot or a 5,000 square foot building ought to be there. They'll tell you how to make it better, but they're not going to tell you, yeah, Nick's the 500,000, let's go to 150. Does that make sense?
Mi- Mike.
Well, I, I think that does, I think that does make sense, Mike, because both the developer who's proposing and the town, if we're looking at it. We want it to happen. And, you know, they're not, like you said, they're not going to say, uh, get rid of this. Or this is a great idea as it is. I, I, I would want that type of input, I think. From what you're saying is that, you know, this, this would be a better spot for this, because that's what, that's what our input should be. You know, on, on these development things that we, we don't have the expertise and that's what they're giving us. I'm not looking for them to put. The kibosh on a deal or anything like that, uh, unless they're really, really amoral and unethical. And feel that, you know, it's going to turn into a sinkhole or something like this and they didn't tell us that it was. But, yeah, I would expect that type of input from those types of experts. I would not expect them to say, these guys are full of crap and. You know, it's because they deal with them in their business each and every day.
Yeah, and, and I think we're mixing the two things. Your approach, the two-phase approach, the first phase being, this is the concept that we wanted. To propose and present that in enough detail that the commission can say, oh, does that make sense? To take the next step. And that would not in- involve at the first step. That would be all the funds uh, by the developer, uh, on their own nickel. Putting forth what we think would be. And if we were to do an evaluation, we'd use our own nickel at that point. When we get down to the nitty gritty on the phase two part of this, that's when it triggers the funds. That would allow the detailed studies. And if, for instance, something was being proposed. That is going to generate phenomenal amounts of wastewater. Uh, the consultant that we would have hired to represent the town's interest would come back and tell us. This thing is not feasible. I mean, that's, could be an output, wouldn't necessarily tell us what it needs to be done to make it feasible. It's, it's representing the town's interest, not the developer's interest. So I mean, if you can, you know, write up that two-phased approach. Uh, with s- some detail, it doesn't have to be, you know, in excruciating detail. But something like that, I think at least give us something to, to look at and, and talk about. You know, moving forward with, with something here instead of having meeting after meeting after meeting.
Okay, um. I think we've come to a point now where, you know, Mike, you and I can have some talks also if you need some direction. Or you need some more structure or anything, but I think, uh, I, I. I, I think it would help the commission to try and see something on, on paper, something that we can. Look at, edit, yeah, that's a good idea, know where does that come from? Um, so if you can move forward with that, so we can share something with the group. And get back to you with input either before or even during the, before the meeting ideally, but even before the next upcoming meeting. Um, I think that would be good. Uh, I really appreciate the discussion back and forth. I think every, every little bit we have moves us forward. And uh, if we can get pen to paper and get something down, uh, that'll help us in the long run too. Um, any other discussion on this? Yes, go ahead, Dick.
I, I think we're at the end of this subject. Uh, my painkillers are wearing off. And I'm. Uh, gonna have to, to sign off here and the, the other items on the agenda, I'll, I'll beg off and see what, what the minutes say.
Okay, thank you, Dick.
Yeah, and unfortunately, this is, the surgeon said it's going to take. Two to four months for this stupid thing to heal.
Hope you're feeling better.
Yeah, me too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, any other discussion from any of the members on this, from what you've heard, any input? Okay, hearing none. Um, gonna move forward, we're gonna go through this quickly. I know it's getting late, we've had some long discussion. Uh, P O C D, short update, uh, out of, oh, excuse me, out of 11. Um. Emails that have been sent out regarding giving uh, different groups sections to look at. Um, we've gotten back five, so almost half. I'm still owed EDC. Uh, I keep hearing it's being worked on, it's being worked on, but I'm waiting to hear on that one. Um, I know the Board of Selectmen will be providing the uh, governance and the public safety and health. Uh, hopefully within the next, their next couple of meetings. I know it's going to be introduced at the next meeting. And I know they've had a lot of work with bonding and roofs to the firehouse and roofs to the school and things like this. Um, I was late, I realized I missed one. And that was housing, so housing has until September 15th to get theirs in. Along with, there was a change with the Historical Society in the leadership there. And I've spoken with the new president of the Historical Society, provided her with the information, and she also has a September 15th to get back to us. Um, those coming in again were agriculture, can't pat Luther on the back, he's not here. Um, the Natural Resources and uh, Conservation Commission has come in, Energy has come in. And OTOF has responded also, uh, as well as uh, education. So, uh, again, waiting on a few more of those to come in. I'd like to, well, I'm looking to the members here. I know we took a list and it would be easy for, or not as easy for me to just reach out and go through the minutes of past meetings, but. Those people interested on being on a subcommittee for the P O C D of the um. Commission, I have Janet, myself, Luther, who's not here right now. And from the civilian side, if you will, I've got Nora Galvin and Christina Sebo had volunteered also. Um, to be as part of that working group. And we did, the last time we did this, we did have members of the community. And other commissions and such be available to us. Was there anyone else here on the commission that wanted to throw their hat in the ring? And help work on the P O C D, because we're coming down to brass tacks now, we're coming down to uh, working with Mike and his group. Uh, as to structure, um, and the, he, Mike has great scope. Of efforts in dealing with Tyke and his company. So anyone else looking to throw their hat out there from the group that's there? Okay, no pressure, no pressure. Um, obviously your input will be, uh. Greatly appreciated at any time when we do bring material to the full commission for consideration when it comes to the P O C D. So that's where we are right now. I think September, we're going to start to see, not only will we have the P O C D, I'm sorry, not only will we have the. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, but we'll have a special meeting for the, um. P O C D, uh, and the subcommission group and minutes and everything like that, probably Zoom, uh. We're allowing for Zoom, where we can have a, a hybrid meeting on that of some way. Uh. That's about it for the P O C D update. I am asking to table the, um. Discussion on short-term rental. I know I did submit to Ken, but I dearly didn't give him a lot of time. I'm sorry, I had a busy month. Um, for the application, but I'm asking him for to review it, so hopefully I'll have his review for the next time around. For the uh, short-term rental for us to uh, discuss, but I'd like to table that. Until next time, can I get a motion to table that?
Janet, so moved.
Uh, can I get a second?
All second.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Could, um, could I ask that it be included in our meeting materials so we can look at it before the next meeting?
The uh, write-ups?
The application, what?
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, the application. Oh, I, I hadn't sent it out to you, what I had before? No, I'll, I'll submit it to Mike and he'll post it for you to take a look at as a draft.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mike, uh, zoning officer's report. If you're not tired of talking.
Um. We're working with Jim Larkin, who's covering the wetlands on behalf of NCOG. Things are a little bit crazy right now because we don't have Katie in the office, so basically, I'm, I am there on. When I'm there is the only time the office is open, so it's a little bit.
To let you folks, to let you folks know, yes, uh, Katie on. Uh, left for another position, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And uh, she'd be sorely missed. She was very effective and helpful, uh, executive assistant there. So, go ahead, Mike, sorry.
So just things are a little bit crazy, you know, uh, trying to make sure everything stays moving and we, we are dealing with. There, all the calls and questions and stuff, um. So just been working with that and trying to get some stuff, um, squared away, um, just in the office in general, but, um. Don't have anything. Anything significant that I can think of at least off the top of my head.
Okay, all right, very good. With that, we come to an end. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Nord, a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Say aye.
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 All those opposed? Still moved. Thank you folks very much. Uh, seemed like kind of a long night tonight, uh, long discussion. Uh, please, uh, if we do get something out, uh, we'll make sure we send you an email regarding the. Uh, especially the material for the IID zone, if we put something together so it can be reviewed ahead of time. Uh, and Janet, like I said, I will get out the, uh, uh, template, the short-term rental. Template application that goes down to, um, Ken. Thank you very much. Thanks for your attention. Thank you for joining.